...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Myers. Roll call please.
Baker?
Yep.
Bassett?
Here.
Barth?
Here.
Beverly?
President?
Jones?
Here.
Ridgeway?
Here.
You have in your packet the December 3 regular council meeting minutes for approval. Are there any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
You have the approved bills list in your packet. Are there any questions?
I have a couple there. C.R. Hunt for 1658. I thought C.R. Hunt was on the bills last time through this room.
No.
I don't remember. It was quite expensive that one. And Finesse County landfill cost to dump trash, two different instances. Why are we paying to dump trash?
Two of those were the live loads from the recycle lot, the street sweeper debris. The second one, that one for $240, we had to take the truck over with the load to get it emptied out.
Okay, how about Tomah, Three March Division?
They came around the lot.
Oh, they do that now. And not about to add the cell tractor, but did itself.
Yes.
Wonderful. Those are all the questions I have, Mayor, and if nobody else has anything, let's pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Barth?
Standing.
The next thing we have on the agenda is to swear in Mark Denning as our new Chief of Police. And I'm very happy to do that. Looks like you brought your own fan club. Well, come over here somewhat and I'll put you in them and I'll be on the side. So I will have you put your right hand on the Bible. I'll do your right hand on the Bible and hold it in the left place.
All right.
And then you'll repeat after me.
I'm Mark Denning. I'm Mark Denning.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the Village of Hicksville.
Of the Village of Hicksville.
Defiance County.
Defiance County.
Ohio.
Ohio.
I will well and truly.
I will well and truly.
Serve the Village of Hicksville.
Serve the Village of Hicksville.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Without favor or affection.
Without favor or affection.
Malice or ill will.
Malice or ill will.
And that I will see.
And I will see.
Or cause our community's peace.
Or cause our community's peace.
To be kept and preserved.
To be kept and preserved.
That I will prevent.
That I will prevent.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All offenses.
All offenses.
Against that peace.
Against that peace.
And that.
And that.
While I continue to be a police officer.
While I continue to be a police officer.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
Thereof faithfully.
Thereof faithfully.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Are you sure your family and friends that are here tonight?
Yes, my youngest daughter Reagan, my niece Lisa, my oldest daughter Peyton, my mother-in-law Sharon, my sister Sharon, my brother-in-law Gary, my brother Gary, and the sheriff, Todd Engel, and Sergeant Dan Kreitz.
Thank you all for coming. There's lots of happy here. We will go on with our agenda and are there any reports from boards or commissions? I see you have the beautification committee minutes in the packet and I don't see anyone here. Okay, any committee reports?
Quick one, we had the police fighter EMS committee meeting was today at 4:30. I'll have them typed up in the packet next week. We talked with Chief Kramer about EMS need or want. John Elwood stepped up since we don't have an EMS chief currently and he stepped up and been doing all the billing and put in a lot of extra hours and he'd like to have a different line item for a position as a deputy chief and it would be a 70 cents per hour raise for John. And the committee voted three to zero to approve that. We also talked a little bit about EMS services with hospital, thoughts on in the future. We'll work on that. Nothing was really decided whatsoever. And we also said Mr. Rutherford would be in here tonight to talk about a topic for the fire, an idea for the fire fundraiser that they have. Talked about the police budget and some concerns yet on the police budget being higher than it should be and we went over that a little bit and then he also talked about an issue, Mark said talked about an issue he has with somebody and he's gonna work on it once he became in office. So that'll be here shortly after Wednesday, his first day. So committee meeting ended at 5:30.
Any other committees that met that have anything to report? Okay, we will go on to the administrators' report.
Couple of things, I mean it's quite lengthy, but a lot of it you just read for yourselves. Just sort of public leaf collection was done back on December 7. Might send a letter to the people that are still outbreaking. Commodities distribution. I didn't talk pastor airs last week. After thinking it over, I'm just gonna leave things the way they are. I don't think we're gonna save any money or really gain much by moving it offsite. So we'll just keep it the way it is. And wanted to get a thank you out to Nelson Herschberg over Tri-State Dairy. We had a lot more frozen food than we had room to store at our shop, so he let us use one of his freezers, so that came in handy. Christmas trees, we'll be picking them up as usual, just take the decorations and lights off. I put in about world where trash collection, just so people know it's gonna be a day late next week, they'll take an extra bag and recycling will still be whatever week you're due for. They'll take things that don't fit in the recycling container, but it's gotta be stuff that's actually recyclable, you just can't throw junk out there. And bulky pickups, the same as always, you can put out two things a month and make arrangements in advance to pay them to get extra things. Then the rest of the reports are just a whole list of things going on in 2019. Come May or June when you start seeing some bills, it's not, eh, we didn't know anything about it. So if you save this, you'll see what I'll be spending money on. And I also went ahead and put in the schedule for the next two phases of the sewer work that we're obligated to do by EPA. And there again, it just gives you an idea when some of the time or what the timelines are. Why we're starting some design work now, some of those are coming up a lot sooner than you think. And I guess if anybody's got any questions about any of them.
Isn't this one ready to go?
Nope. That's the one I just.
I know you did, you got a change on it, but I thought everything else other than.
No, on Chicago Avenue, they had sent a contract that was before, they didn't have included the gone west part of the water line part that was decided to, now those will be too separate, they'll get back to me with the contract for that, but Troy will have to bring legislation for that one. And the Defiance Avenue, this station one, that's currently underway. So that one and Ogen Street won't end up doing that construction long before 2026, but I could put the deadlines in there to give you an idea of what we're looking at.
Does anybody have any questions for Kent?
One recycle lot, what are the hours and last year did we come back in the winter time?
The winter always closes for December, January, and February. So right now through March, through March 1, it's only Thursdays 1 to 6 and Saturdays 9 to 1. And I guess with this list of projects, it also gives you an idea of where you might wanna start saving up some money. This stuff's not going to be cheap. Part of the design work and stuff going on in 2019, I've got covered, but when you start getting into constructions where you're gonna be scrounging, I mean, we'll have some funding, but there's something else to think about when you talk about the budget in general.
That phase three, that high rate treatment, that's where we gotta hopefully save some a lot of money there, right?
If our first two phases do enough, we can maybe eliminate it.
Right, that's the key.
Point.
As we pay this $500 and $1,000 month after month, have they ever told us how much we've pulled out at this point?
Oh, why?
Pulled out.
No, Jeff had worked up a sheet.
When were they here, was it? Probably been two months ago. Andy, he was working up some data for us.
Jeff had pulled out showing three of the CSOs we haven't had an overflow for ages and that's, two of those are the ones that were in this, this part about just shutting off. And the rest of them, they've got access to the flow numbers and so no, they've not come back and said, you still gotta get rid of X million. They're, they're still gonna go by number of CSO events we have, even though we have to show them how many gallons we're getting out of the system.
Right, that's what I was just, I don't wanna affect Jeff's work week, but is there any way he could come up with some numbers? He was, I know in the wintertime, the rain gauges were not heated, so they weren't taking any water calculations in the wintertime. So he's doing that this winter. I said, we need those numbers to show actual data.
Right.
And everything with the, with the plant treatment. So I think this winter they're.
Yeah, I mean he could, he could probably just pass along what he gave the committee.
Yeah.
So yeah, I mean, 'cause he had that all done for the meeting.
Knowing what we've done so far and then if somebody says, well, you know, we only, we only pulled out a one train through the year, I would be really upset.
Well, see there again, when you talk to Andy and Brian when they were here, he goes, a lot of it depends on how quick the rains came and went away.
Well, I know what their philosophy is, but still.
But he had some rainfall amounts and gallons and all that.
Had to be a bunch.
I'll just have him pull that stuff out and have it for next meeting.
Was it a bunch?
I don't remember.
Somebody saw the numbers.
Improved.
I still think the EPA's got it backwards.
Especially when a landowner drives his mean.
Because the only CSOs that are still active are three and six. If we can get them down below four a year, we should be done, but they're still not happy until they see the whatever magic number we're pulling out of the system.
Right.
And I keep saying that makes no sense. If we're below four, that's the letter of the law, that's all we gotta do. And they disagree. So, so they haven't given me a magic number, so I don't know what we're aiming for.
So they're bucking their own law.
Well, they're treating us different than they are some other towns, Els and Newland. And if we can keep separating, I'm hoping to avoid phase three.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for Kent? We'll go on to the solicitor's report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2018-15, first reading by caption only, and the annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville Village and declaring an emergency.
The last most. Any questions on that before I suspend the rules? Or I can also suspend the rules.
Are there any questions? But is this fine?
The appropriations, this is what we talked about.
The budget?
The budget? Don't you think we should give this some more thought?
No.
I just wanted to see if I.
Ron, you're not gonna be here for the next meeting.
I wanted to see if she'd roll smoke out of those ears.
I have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call please. Baker?
No.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Barth?
Yes.
It's the second, third reading ordinance 2018-15 by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville Village and declaring an emergency.
Also move.
The only thing, I just wanna make sure, did anything get changed today?
No.
They don't have, okay, good enough.
I checked.
Didn't wanna have a.
After the fact.
I'll second.
Roll call? Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Okay, next is first reading ordinance 2018-16 by caption only, which is an ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees and declaring an emergency.
Does that add the EMT on that list, right? The one we just voted on tonight? Okay.
You are?
It's on here.
Okay.
I thought it was a new position.
Yeah.
You're not talking about the one that I do?
It's already in the bylaws. They're existing bylaws and in effect since 2013.
So there is a position, okay.
Who's existing bylaws?
EMS.
EMS slash EMS. Do you have a job description for it?
Yes.
But there's not a line for the pay.
It would be under a EMT chief slash full-time EMT.
You're gonna create one, I think, like.
See the one right below it, right here. See the one right below it says full-time EMT.
Well, no, there again, as long as you guys.
Yeah.
There again, this is gonna save me. Hey, there's one. So now as long as you guys got it in there, that's fine.
I'm happy with it.
I'm happy with everything, it's Christmas.
Somebody's getting seconded. Ron and Ron, one and two.
Roll call.
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Second, third reading ordinance 2018-16 by caption only, ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees and declaring an emergency.
I'll second it.
Roll call? Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Your Christmas at your house, you.
Resolution 2018-29, a first reading by caption only, a resolution declaring services to be provided to territory proposed for annexation and declaring an emergency. And for the record sake, the emergency is the annexation statute requires the village to act on this within 20 days of when the petition was filed, which is like a couple of days from now. It was filed by our last, like right before our last meeting.
To protect the village, I'm gonna just bend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call? Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Second, third reading, resolution 2018-29 by caption only, a resolution declaring services to be provided to territory proposed for annexation and declaring an emergency.
I'll second.
Roll call? Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
And then resolution 2018-30, first reading by caption only, a resolution providing that the village will carry insurance on the Village of Hicksville sign located on the property FWTLLC and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend rules. Second.
Roll call? Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-30, second, third readings by caption only, a resolution providing that the village will carry insurance on the Village of Hicksville sign located on the property FWTLLC and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Roll call? Martha?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
When we're done with everything else, I would like a, hopefully brief the executive session and talk about some litigation.
Troy, what did you find out about the land behind the cemetery?
As far as I could find, I went and researched whatever, as far as I could, and that's village land. I didn't see any, any point that it was transferred off. Kind of confirms what Kent thought and still shows up there, so as far as I can tell.
So have you also been in touch with Kent about his reconstruction?
That's the executive session, yeah.
And the van accident?
Yeah, he brought me stuff, but that's the exec, that's why I requested the executive session to talk about that stuff.
All right, we'll go on to the top department head report. Future chief, Mark Denning, do you have anything to report for the police department?
No, I have another report today.
Okay. Fire chief, Kramer.
Just a couple of things. Did we vote on, we didn't vote on John in that position yet. Can, can we do, can I get a recommendation from the mayor?
I didn't know anything about it for tonight. I thought you had an understanding that you were gonna bring these things to me before council meeting.
Well, it slipped my mind, I've been a little busy.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll recommend John for whatever position that you've all agreed to put him in.
Deputy chief.
I know nothing about it.
I knew nothing about it.
It was just brought to.
We had a meeting tonight, we didn't know anything either, so. It was for bumping him up 70 cents an hour for doing all the extra billing and all the paperwork and everything that the chief.
I thought we were, I thought we were gonna, I mean, I don't have a problem giving him more money, but I thought that position was gonna ride until we established a full-time, put another full-time back in there. I thought we were gonna leave that open.
Well, he's not the EMS chief, he'll be the deputy chief.
Right.
And he's doing all the.
It's kinda what it is, Ron.
Kind of, yeah.
Different label.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Lot of rush, rush stuff.
But we had hired one, we hired another EMT to replace the one that left.
I'll make a motion on the mayor's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Roll call? Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Barth?
Yes.
Thank you. Christmas for kids to give a toy handout is going on right now. We've had over 70 families we're helping out.
And Hicksville? Hicksville only?
I'm thinking it's around 100, it's more, over 100 kids, like 140 maybe. I don't have the exact number yet. And then Mitchell Rutherford has something he'd like to ask for the council to consider or maybe approve.
Anything for EMS.
So basically every year, our Hicksville Volunteer Fire Association puts on a fundraiser, it's a reverse drawing. We do it down at the Catholic church every year and this year I'd like to change things up a little bit and that's why I'm here to see about getting permission to have the event in our fire hall instead of down at the Catholic church and be in a village building. I needed to come and get permission from you is what all the state people that have liquor license said I needed to do. So that's why I'm here is to see about getting permission to have the event over there rather than at the Catholic church.
What's the main reason for not having it, or you don't want it at the church?
Um, I guess there's, it's kinda been an event that's been dying out a little bit and it's been the same old, same old every year. And we always have it at the church and I'm trying to change things up a little bit, that way we can get people excited about it and kinda, I don't know, I just think we got such good building over there, I'd like to show that off too and so that's.
You don't think parking would be an issue or?
What's that?
Parking?
I was gonna talk to the bank about parking cars there and then we have a little bit of street parking and then our parking lot as well. So we have about 300 people that come and most of them are pairs and ride together.
I made a comment about that parking during our PFE meeting and I said, you know, when they came to the Feather Bingo, they had 400 people there and they don't plan to have that many at the reverse raffle, so they didn't think parking would be an issue. And the other thing was, we talked about having liquor in a government building, so I told them, we don't do that for one year receptions at the school and they didn't know if it was legal or not and Mark said it is legal to do, you can get a one-day liquor license and it can be approved to have it at them.
Which I have to fill one out at the Catholic church too, it's an F2 liquor license and it's.
What time of year does this happen?
Uh, May, the first weekend of May is when it typically happens. This year I'm looking at maybe April, late March. There's some dates that I've been throwing around, I just don't know exactly which one yet. I know we have a pancake breakfast over there, March 9, but I think that's also fire school, so.
Fire school.
Is it? Okay, so it might be March 9th, we'll see.
Where do you get your liability insurance through when you use the Catholic church?
Um, our association has the.
It's through Cincinnati Mutual.
Yeah.
Will they be insuring you?
Yes.
For this event?
Yeah.
It used to be a big hit when it was at the multipurpose building too.
Well, that's what, I've heard a bunch of people, you know, talk about how it used to be and I'm trying to get it to that point and, and do that, so I'm just trying to change things up a little bit this year and switch the location. I got a couple other ideas that I wanna do, so.
I'd rather see our trucks sitting inside and, and the fairgrounds utilized as opposed to the building. Ken will wanna start drinking in his building.
Maybe I would. I just wanna drink in my office.
What about council room?
The license is only good for one day, so.
I think it sounds like a good idea.[1623.44]
Do you have any problems with it, Troy?
I told Kent, I mean, I, normally that would be fine, the question would be to check with Conrad, since it's an actual village building, and if somebody else is making sure we don't have an insurance.
We provide liability.
Yeah, you do, but to make sure somehow that doesn't affect something that they do.
So, you said a reverse raffle, or basically you want a one-day liquor license?
Yeah, which I have it with me, I gotta fill it out.
Just so I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll find out.
It's an F2 permit, is what it's called.
As long as interest is fine with it, I'm fine with it.
I have no problem, to be honest with you. If Troy's happy with it, then I'm happy.
Long as Conrad's happy, I'll be happy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell. Hey, Scott, did you wanna say, you said something about saying something about the jaws?
January 5th, we're having a training session with representatives from Finley Fire who sell Hearst rescue tools. We currently have two sets of jaws, two cutters and two spreaders. One of the cutters is malfunctioning, it's broke, and they no longer support it, so we can't get parts for it. Everything now is going to battery-operated, so they're bringing some battery-operated tools for us to look at. When I last talked to him, it's no guarantee he'll have it when we get ready to do it, but he had a demo unit of a cutter and a spreader combination tool that we could get for about half price, be around $7,550. New, a cutter and a spreader individually, one was 14 and one was $12,000, I think. So we were gonna look at that and see what we decide to do after we train with them and see what they're like.
Have you considered our local hydraulic shop for repairing yours? What do you say?
We've had him repair them before. Hearst has their own deals, their own special rubber and stuff, apparently.
Just a heads up.
Thank you.
Anybody here from the park? All right. We'll go on to the fiscal officers' report.
The only thing I have tonight is the fund status report, and the purchaser listing I put on here, most of those will disappear because I've already paid bills for the last time this year. And I also put in the revolving loan report.
Anybody have any questions about those reports? Okay. Well, Cheryl had some things on my desk tonight that I must post comment on. But it is my pleasure to tell you that we have some employees that have been with the village quite a while, and I would like to recognize Troy Sargent for 25 years of service, Mike Tomacek with the fire department for 20 years of service, Richard Evans Jr. with the fire department, 20 years of service, Jonathan Renaud, 10 years as a fireman, Travis Stratton, five years as a fireman, Craig Doctor with our police department, he is our sergeant, five years of service, and Terry Ayers, a part-time police officer with five years of service. And then, it looks like we go on to some elected officials here. We have Diane Collins with 35 years of service, Ron Jones with 19 years of service, Ron Beverly with 16 years of service, Troy Essex with 12 years of service, Michael Barth with eight years of service, Sheila Baker with two years of service, Eric Bassett with one year of service, and Larry Ridgeway with one year of service. Thank you, everyone, for your service. And then, I have a letter from the Ohio EPA. Was that in everybody's packet, or do I have the only one?
I forgot the mission. You don't have to read it all. 30 days ago, I gave you the initial letter from them. This was about the study we did for Chicago Avenue, changing the plan we were going to do. 30 days rolled up, so they just sent the final. Okay, but nothing changed, other than we can actually move forward and how that was going through.
Okay. And then I, we all received a letter from Christ Covered Ministries that are preparing for the annual Christmas project 2018, and they are also asking, they put in the, in the letter a punch card to return with a donation. So anyone that feels so inclined to help Christ Covered, there are Food Pantry Uptown, and if you don't know how to get ahold of them, you can come see me, and I'll give you the information that I have. So, does anybody have anything else? Do we have anyone in the audience that wanted to address council about anything tonight? Any visitors? I know we have some here. Okay.
I make motion, we go into executive session for possible litigation.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.[1747.12]